Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the Coventry School Committee Open Session. I have 5:32. Could we have a roll call, please?
Kathy Patnood?
Here.
Dave Florio?
Yeah.
Luke Murray?
Here.
Donna Calounian?
Yeah.
James Pearson?
Here.
Craig Lovis?
Yeah.
Lori Andries?
Yeah.
Sarah Mangiarelli?
Here.
Okay, so do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Chair, make a motion to go into executive session.
I second the motion. Roll call, please.
Kathy Patnood?
Yes.
Dave Florio?
Yes.
Luke Murray?
Yes.
Donna Calounian?
Yes.
James Pearson?
Yes.
Okay, then we're going to leave and go into our executive session. See you on the other side.
We can open it. Okay. Families definitely at our Grab and Go Meal site, you know, we've had DCWF workers come bringing meals to other communities, other students. You know, we average about between $450, $500, which is just amazing. And I go there every day just to get a pulse of individuals, asking everybody how they're doing. And I've said this, nothing's perfect, but there's such a sense of gratitude for what's going on in the community and in our staff. And so, you know, I could spend a long time just thanking individuals. I am so blown away by the compassion that is being shown. So I received, I can't even think of three complaints. I say complaints, concerns that parents have, other than the graduation. I receive a lot of questions about graduation and seniors, but I can't think of three emails I've received that were very, you know, concerning. And one was today, and as soon as I shared that with the administration, they were all over it with the family. And, you know, I think our people are just rising to the occasion. And, you know, my goal is to keep people moving forward. So quickly, we know the governor ended school, you know, said we're not going back into our buildings today. I have requested that our original date, end date, was the 11th. We had a couple of snow days. I've asked him, the commissioner, if she could let us have officially the end date on Friday, the 12th. I think it's fair for everybody involved. Now, that would be the official end of school. It doesn't mean we can't take a look and work together as an administrative team with our teachers and look at what would be best in terms of how do we end the year with students? What type of activities? But because this information just came tonight, you know, what I can say is I've asked the commissioner that our official date would be, and we've done this before, asked for waivers, I asked if that would be on the 12th. So, but I want people to understand, we still have a lot to do to think about what is the end of school going to look like, you know? We're going to make sure that we end properly. We have a lot to work, we've been doing on grading. There's been meetings at all levels, and we're going to meet, probably meeting tomorrow with Don and Lori to kind of sum all the work, the recommendations that have come forward from the high school, the middle school, and the elementary school. But we're going to do this in a lens of being fair to students, what's in their best interest. And as I said before, Mr. Nekes has some AP students that are outstanding students, but they're having challenges and difficulties because of what's going on. So we have to make sure that we look at every situation, and it's not a decision we're going to take lightly, but we're going to do it in the lens of being fair. The other thing that's talked about is in terms of graduation, you know, the governor, I think, said today, you know, and the commissioner has said that, you know, they're looking at that. I don't know what that means, you know, and all I can say, I get a lot of recommendations. We're going to do what's in the best interest of students in terms of, and families in terms of safety. I'm not an expert, and I'm not going to pretend to be, but we do, we do plan on doing something in terms of celebration. West Warwick, I, my understanding is, they said there's going to be no spring activities and no, you know, they've canceled all the activities. We haven't done that, you know, if I, if a middle, elementary school wants to do a moving up ceremony virtually somehow, you know, I'm supportive of that. The high school plans on doing CPA, a scholarship night, they want to do an award ceremony, honors night, virtually, and I, and I'm supportive of that. I don't, you know, I, I think that's important, to have some normalcy, you know, as much as possible. So, so in terms of the big picture, you know, that, that's where we stand. We try to make sure that we are revising on an ongoing basis the work. We've drilled it down to individual student needs. We've conveyed the message that whatever you need in terms of families, you know, this has to be a partnership. We've asked families to reach out and let us know how we can support them, not only academically, but, but we've supported families with clothing, with fuel assistance, through other agencies, with, you know, we have agencies that have worked and provided counseling services. So we try to use all of our partners, and I think we've done a pretty good job doing that, and, you know, we have the willingness to do that. So that's kind of the big picture. As we end the year, we also need to be thinking about what we can do in the summer, you know? And these are conversations we haven't had. This is what, you know, what I'm looking at doing is, we're obviously working through our, our staff, our administrators is, you know, if we get some stimulus funds, could we utilize them to do some type of programming based on need to provide supports to students in the summer? You know, typically, we do extended school year for students that qualify with disabilities, but, you know, we have an opportunity perhaps to do some additional programming. For some students, it would just be like regression recruitment, keeping them moving forward, but other students may need some more intensive support. Because I know there's a lot of concern about, you know, this, the impact this will have on student learning. So we're going to look at that, but I'm saying that to you, not having had conversations with our, with our, you know, with our staff. So, so that's the big picture piece. Again, I don't know if, if Don is on, Don Coward? And I don't see Don on there, so if you don't, if you bear with me, I'm going to read something that Don had put together about the elementary. Again, it's not as good as coming from, from him, but what Don said about the elementary is, we started distance learning with two weeks of paper-based lesson packets. So we weren't going to use any digital platform for the, the elementary, because we're a one-to-one, grade six to 12. They quickly discovered that this method was not sustainable long-term. Through collaboration with Mr. Murphy, our director, we were able to distribute hundreds of school assigned Chromebooks to elementary families in need. By week three, we moved to a digital platform, similar to the middle school and the high school. Based on teacher and family feedback, the lesson plan template was also updated and streamlined to help students and families navigate the work. Initially, it was like an extremely lengthy document, and so they, they've accepted, you know, a lot of feedback from the families, from the teachers, and they streamlined that. Many of our elementary teachers have increased their knowledge and use of platform tools like Google Classroom, Google Slides, and Google Forms. The goal has been to try to duplicate the current curriculum in the home setting. One thing that's important is initially, we started with what's called synchronous type of learning, that everybody was on, teachers were trying to, you know, be on with their students at the same time. And we realized in this world, best practice around digital learning is more asynchronous. So they've really streamlined the, in terms of how they're, when they're on live with students, you know, targeted assistance. Initially, they started to do morning ceremonies, you know, like the pledge, morning announcements, and they realized that not everybody could listen to it for a variety of reasons. So what they did is they start taping and posting those. So you'll see that across the board. The curriculum vendors with that, the middle, the elementary schools working with have expanded their capacity to help our students continue to access materials they've used comfortably all year long. So they've given us a lot of digital access. Finally, now that we have a good understanding of what students need to remain connected to their teachers, class, and school. Teachers and administration have done virtual meetings, virtual small group instruction, video lessons, presentations, and numerous phone calls to stay connected and maintain relationship with students and families. Every week gets better, and students are actively participating in virtual instruction. That's about the elementary that, that Don had written. So I'd like to ask Lori Andries, if Lori, if you don't mind, you can talk a little bit about the middle school, the high school, and then if you don't mind talking a little bit about English language learners?
Sure. As you know, both at the high school and the middle school, prior to the implementation of, of the distance learning, both buildings were utilizing Google Classroom and technology to supplement and enhance their teaching. Because this practice was in place with students transitioning to the distance learning scenario has been easier for the secondary students, families, and staff than it has been for the elementary students. It's been a transition nonetheless. We've surveyed parents at both buildings twice now, once at the beginning, and again, more recently. And we've used that evidence provided by parents and students to adjust not only the teaching practice of teachers, but student schedules and work submission timelines, and when support is available and provided to students. There is support at both buildings being provided not only during regular, what we, what we call regular school hours, but additionally after-school hours for, for students. The teachers and the administration have been extremely flexible in their delivery, their expectations, and the supports during this time, based on the feedback they're getting from students and families. Attendance at both schools has been very good for those kids and families who, right out of the gate, were having attendance problems. They've worked closely with school support staff to reach out to those families in addition to the teachers reaching out. And in some cases, we've utilized the SRO to try to make contact with families. So that we have touched all of those kids and families numerous times to engage them. Teachers are holding Zoom meetings. They have set office hours where students can access them and individual sessions with individual kids based on what their needs might be. The social-emotional needs of kids at the secondary level looks really different. They are missing their friends. They are missing that social piece. I'm sure a lot of you have seen videos that are being posted on Facebook and other social platforms. The, the staff and the kids are attempting to meet each other's needs for that connection, that personal connection through the means that they have available to them right now. Both schools are providing academic supports, both during school and after-school hours. So has it been perfect? Nothing's perfect. There's, there's nothing that's going to replace kids in a classroom and an adult standing in front of them. But given the situation that we're in, I think that Coventry has a lot to be proud of. They've done an excellent job in supporting kids and families during this very, very difficult time, while dealing with their own families and their own lives at the same time. I'll tell you a little bit about ELL and how that's going. That's a district-wide support. We currently are servicing 36 students, representing 29 families across all seven buildings. So we have two full-time ELL teachers and a part-time ELL assistant that we pay out of the CRP grant. The students and families, some students and families in this population took a little time to kind of come on board, but there was increased outreach by the teachers and the TA during those first couple of weeks. And now everybody's on board, everybody's fully engaged. The families and students are using updated or newly created Google Classroom support pages made specifically for them and their specific needs. They're making steady progress during this time. And the ELL teachers are really working collaboratively with the regular classroom teacher and at the secondary level with the content area teachers to modify work for kids, translate work for students, both online and hard copy if need be. They, the T, ELL assistant reaches out every single day to every single family. So in addition to the teacher having contact with those kids around instruction, the teaching assistant reaches out to make sure that the family is okay. We are holding Google Classroom, Google Hangouts, Zoom, and Google Meets forums for all of those kids and families. Any student or parent who requires translation either of work or for conversation purposes, we use either Google Translate or Antonella Speaks Spanish, one of our ELL teachers. So we utilize her bilingual skills frequently to support those families where Spanish is the language in the home. And generally, those kids are doing as well as the other kids at their level. So people are working really hard. Antonella said to me the other day, as hard as I thought I was working when I was, we were covering seven buildings across Coventry's town borders, I'm working twice as hard now. So, but they are committed to making sure that kids are successful and appropriately supported. So that's where we are.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I have some updates on special education services. And Mr. Anderson, I believe, is on board on, on our call, but I know he has reference to Coventry as, as an exemplar. Again, nothing's perfect, but I feel that our, our, our teachers, our support staff, our teaching assistants are doing an amazing job providing the support to families. And I also, you know, hear this again at the Grab and Go Meal sites. I've had many parents come up to me and talk about how the special educator is really the glue, reaching out to their students on a daily basis. I had one parent tell me that a special educator, actually, their child is on the spectrum, and the special educator contacts them at 5 o'clock every night to read a story to their child, one-on-one, and that keeps their child focused for the entire day. So, I mean, there's some amazing stories out there, and I'm sure at some point, you know, somebody will write a book about the experiences. We always talk about these unintended positive consequences, but, and again, nothing's perfect. But I'm going to read like some of the things that we've done, which is important, because the federal government really hasn't relieved us of any requirements in terms of, you know, the, the IEPs and implementing the IEPs. All timelines regarding evaluation of IP meetings have been continued to be met. We actually purchased a, a service called DocuSign, where parents can have meetings, teams can have meetings, and then we can send them the paperwork so that we're, you know, that they can actually sign virtually. It may seem like a little thing, but it's been a really big success in helping us stay on top of our, our timelines with, with parents. Services have been offered to all, all parents and families and students, and we've had a few families refuse having certain services, but very few. Again, very, you know, I haven't received any complaints whatsoever, and I don't believe Mr. Wilson has. If, if we receive some concerns, we address them immediately. Teaching assistants and, you know, teachers, support personnel, like speech and language, PTOT, they've been contacting families daily. That's one of the, the, the underlying, the foundations that we put into our distance learning program was to make sure that we, not only about academic supports, where we do check-ins with families to see how they're doing, if there's other needs that they have. And that's been very, very, received very well by the families. Our school psychologists and social workers, our guidance counselors are working with families who have identified needs around social-emotional anxiety. I had a parent talk to me the other day at the Grab and Go and said that they had been on the phone with the school psychologist for themselves. They were having some challenges and reached out, and the counselor actually had called them to check in on the student, and then they had their own, you know, as they said, a private counseling session. So I think, you know, our staff is above and beyond in terms of providing those wraparound services for children. I think the communication and collaboration, again, we always know education's a partnership, and especially in special education, we've seen that. That's been, the communication both ways has been outstanding. And the concern is extended school year. So we have students who are eligible for extended school year. And, you know, the, the recommendation, I think, will be to continue to do that virtually, I think, you know, with the decision the governor made today. But that's something that we need to address and figure out how we're going to address their needs. Typically, we run in, you know, several-week program, and students come to us, you know, varying amounts of time depending on their need. So we're going to have to, you know, really plan that, and what will that look like virtually? So that's a concern, but it's something that we will overcome and look at. That's the piece about special ed, and I know we'll open this up to questions in a minute, but I just wanted to, the other piece I have is questions around career tech. How do we continue to support our students' career tech? So I had Ms. Ferguson write up, you know, I'll just bear with me. Teachers of all programs are continuing their certification curriculum with online curriculum, live and virtual demonstrations. All students continue to be on track with all certification requirements. And I just asked for a few examples. There's many here, and I will submit these documents. Like I said, you know, things are a little different now, and, you know, I posted tonight, just so everybody knows in the community, we posted the documents that were shared with the school committee, are posted on our website. But we'll pull these summaries together, and we'll put these together in a format that's easily, you know, readable, makes sense to, to the community. Have some examples. So advanced welding assignments continue to be aligned to the curriculum concepts of the American Welding Society curriculum. This online curriculum aligns video tutorials to each of the concepts. Students continue to complete safety tests online. Criminal justice, live demos one time per week, virtual crime scenes, juniors and seniors are continuing their argument papers for college credit. Mrs. Haynes, literacy teacher, and Ed Pascarella, Roger Williams, program coordinator, continue to work with students as they move towards completion of their papers. Health careers, students are able to watch tutorials of skills and sending videos of practicing the skill for the CNA exam. Online tutorials are aligned to the 22 CNA skills exam. The Department of Health has suspended the CNA exam at this time, but we have asked the governor to consider allowing CNA students to complete the exam this summer, since our local facilities rely on our students to fill a critical shortage of CNA workers. Seniors are continuing to receive instruction virtually with our emergency medical team company. This instruction is co-taught with our health instructors and the instructor from the MT company. Students will be eligible for the national certification testing resumes. And office hours are provide face-to-face time for live demos once per week. Culinary arts, they have live virtual demo. Students can ask questions, demo follows curriculum. Students are given choices on demonstrating proficiency, produce a video of cooking, a dish, written work, video slide deck. Students are still keeping on track with certification training. Teachers completed PD with the ACF credited, credited programs in the country. And the ACF, I believe it's the American Culinary, whatever F stands for, I apologize, has not made a final decision yet on administering certification tests at this time. So I think that, you know, again, when I went back to that synchronous versus asynchronous, you know, what we see across the board is a lot of students are taking ownership for their learning. Teachers are really facilitating, you know, part of what we're doing is really supporting parents, you know? We talk about running into the wall. I don't know about you, but, you know, every week, there's a day where I run into a wall, you know? And I have to reach out, ask for help, support, some guidance, to get myself to keep moving forward, you know? And I think that's, we recognize that everybody's doing that. And so we're not just providing that academic support. I think what's important is providing that social-emotional support, that guidance. I find myself more active listening than I've ever done in my entire life, you know? And I hope people, you know, there are many people who are listening to me, and I feel that, you know, that's what we're, we're, we're continuing to do. We recognize this is a struggle, and we don't know what next year's going to look like, right? I mean, you know, I get pressured all the time, and, and I said this to somebody earlier today. You know, I think we've become extremely reflective. We realize the need for people to know things that they control, things that they can't control. But I think our district, I, I know our district's done an incredible job being reflective practitioners, you know, making decisions collaboratively and keeping that laser beam focused, not only on students, but their families. And, and what I say now is we, we're actually supporting a lot of grandparents. Many grandparents, more so than in the past, are taking care of their children now because both parents are working. And we see that, like I said, if I look at the Grab and Go and between 450 and 500 meals, I think that's a good, if you were polling, I think that's a good cross-section of our community. And, you know, the support that our teachers, our, our, all of our staff are providing is amazing. And I also want to take a little time to talk about our custodial staff, our clerks, central office. I mean, we've kept everything, even though there's nobody here but me, we've kept everything going. There's not a, a process, a function that we offer in central office that we haven't continued remotely. People come in when necessary, because as you know, we have a lot of archaic systems. We're still moving into our new keystone, our new financial software. That'll take time. But we've kept all those procedures. Registration is continuing for students. You know, our buildings, you wouldn't, you know, they're old. They're, 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 they're having their struggles. But, you know, I had a custodian, Mr. Clark, many of you know Mr. Clark, called me a couple of weeks ago. A thing, he said, you know, he's been talking, speaking to many custodians, and they wanted to, you know, they're very thankful to continue to work, and of course, that they're so needed, but he said to me that, you know, our students are faculty. They, we hope they don't recognize the buildings when they come in. So, you know, everybody is working every day, you know? Many of our people are working seven days a week, because I see the emails going back and forth. And there's such a commitment and a passion to this community that often gets lost because of politics or individual or group agendas. But I think we're seeing that today. You know, again, I don't want a candy coat thing, but I am so blessed, you know, like I said, I've never been more proud to be sitting in the seat than I am today. But there are many struggles that come forward that we don't even know, you know, what, we don't even know what they will be. But I'm very comfortable with, you know, the, the way that our community has risen to, to, to meet the challenge. So I know that's a lot of information. As time goes on, we can be, you know, give more examples. I'm hoping that we can give you more successes, but today, we just want to touch base on a lot of different areas. Again, we know that people are struggling, you know? We, we know that we have members of our own community, school community, who have COVID-19, their, their spouses have COVID-19, their family members. We have many people who are first responders, you know, in terms of, you know, they're, they're working as nurses. We've had our own nurses volunteer to go working on the front lines. So this is impacting us in ways that, you know, I can't imagine. And yet, having said that, we continue to move forward, you know? I said in something, we trudge forward, you know, we're, we're heavy with purpose, and I believe that's what we're doing. So, but that'll turn it back over to, to Ms. Patnood.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lovis. Thank you for that update. Before we bring it out to the public, I'm just going to go through our school committee members first, if they have any questions. And I believe, Mr. Pearson, you are on the hot seat first. So do you have any questions, comments that you'd like to make?
I do, and thank you, Mr. Lovis, for covering several areas I had questions about. So you eliminated several of my questions, which I'm sure you're thrilled about. There was an article in the Providence Journal, either today or yesterday, talking about the differences in how Rhode Island is handling distance learning compared with Massachusetts. And apart from the fact that it looks like Rhode Island is doing a better job, there was a comment from a parent in the article, which, I don't know if I have a question on or I'd like you to comment on, but, but the, the parent's feedback was, the parent felt that our elementary teachers needed more support because, you know, our high school and our middle school teachers may have been more familiar with the technology already, because we have Chromebooks in the middle school and high school, and, and maybe not as much. It's not as prevalent in the elementary schools. We haven't gone one-to-one there yet. So have you, have you and your team thought about some extra supports for teachers who need it at the elementary level to ensure that they're leveraging the technology as best they can?
So the, this, yes. I read that article, I think it was a Boston Globe, because it was Dan McGowan who had left, I believe, I could be wrong.
It could have been the Globe, yes.
Yeah, but I read it, and I, and I saw that. So just, you know, I read it this morning. I shared it with their ad staff, because I'm sure that one of our administrators is the principal of that, that family. So again, I think that was, that was, you know, an individual's, you know, perspective about a specific teacher that they were working with. But you're absolutely right. I mean, I think, so what happens with the elementary is that, you know, in terms of, you know, using a digital platform, I think one of the things is that certain, you know, individuals have, maybe have more competency than other individuals. But that's something that we are aware of, that I know our principals are, are, are very supportive. But I've got to say that But I've got to say that if you see the emails and if you're on any of the listservs, that there's such a collegial atmosphere that's been demonstrated by our educators supporting. I'll give you one example. Mr. Rockwell at the high school, he's offered webinars, virtual meetings on Google Classroom. I had an elementary teacher rave about him to me from Washington Oaks, shared an email about how, you know, she was on one of his tutorials and then she had some specific questions she was trying to implement. She emailed him right away. He got back to her right away and helped their problem solve. And that's just one example. So I think lessons learned moving forward, and we talked a little bit about this, some of the administrators and myself today. One of the things we were looking, we were on a call with Betsy DeVos today, myself, Mrs. Andrews and Ms. Mangiorelli, and talking about some potential funding we may get that we can use going back to March 13th. And so one of the areas was really around professional development for teachers. So we have an opportunity to put together some professional development around those areas. So I know that's a long-winded answer, but yes, we're aware of that. There's been a lot of support amongst colleagues. And I think when I read Mr. Cowitt's information, you know, where he shared about elementary, acknowledged that, that things are getting better over time. But again, if families are having specific concerns or questions, we ask them to reach out to us immediately so we can problem solve. And sometimes that problem solving might be, how can we support you to a teacher? Because we're in this together and we recognize even the most gifted educator that we have may have their own children. I've been on many virtual meetings where two or three children are clinging to a teacher while they're part of a meeting and we can't, you know, forget that. So yes, we're going to address that moving forward, but I think we've put a lot of good supports in for teachers and that's their colleagues. So again, sorry for the long-winded answer, but it's a good question.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's all I had for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. So, Mrs. Coloney, did you have anything for the superintendent?
I just wanted to say that, Craig, thank you for the update. I've been hearing from a lot of my friends who do have children in the schools and, you know, while it is challenging with them trying to work and, you know, basically supervise their children, they did say that it's working well and that they're surprised how well everything, you know, just came together and you had a week to do it. So just want to say kudos.
Thank you. Yeah, it's kudos to everybody doing everybody. When I say everybody, I mean everybody. You know, if we have 750 employees, I can guarantee you that the 750 employees are going above and beyond. You know, we have teaching assistants that not only are they calling students, but I see them coming through the grab and go every day, dropping off five meals, seven meals to different families. We had a little tidbit, I know there's more questions, but the SCORE program, which is at Hopkins Hill, seven to nine cars, the teachers, I think, Mrs. Tang, they drove by each of the students' homes. So these are students that have some significant social emotional needs. They drove by those homes and with signs and stopped, you know, honking their horn. You know, we say this all the time, our community loves one another, you know, our teachers, our support staff, our custodians. I mean, I don't even know if I finished my story with Mike Clark, but he wants to make sure, he wanted me to know that these custodians care so much about the students and staff. They want to make sure that they know they're going to do whatever they can do to make sure that these buildings are beautiful when they come back in. So it's a great feeling despite all the challenges that we're all faced. Thank you, though, for that.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Thanks, Donna. Mr. Murray.
Thanks for the update. I guess I take it as an interesting perspective because I'm not only a member, I'm a parent. So it's been definitely a transition for my wife and I, who both work full-time jobs, trying to juggle homeschooling my eight-year-old and I, you know, some of a lot of the things that Craig touched on, I've observed firsthand. So the first two weeks, there was hard copies that went out. It was a little bit confusing as a parent, you know, you're jockeying between digital and hard copy and they quickly transitioned, which I appreciated as a parent because Google Classroom is great. I'm able to log in. A lot of the documents with my eight-year-old, I'll go in, I log into his account and I'll do it with him. So I'm on my computer, he's on his Chromebook. I'm looking at the document as he's typing. I'm able to correct him as he goes and then I have another monitor with my work going on and I'm answering emails. So as a professional parent, I'm very lucky. I know there's others, parents out there who are not. Some didn't have internet access at first, some don't have as accommodating a jobs to allow them to work at home right now. So I appreciate that and I hope that we're doing everything we can to accommodate those individuals. It sounds like we are. I don't think my kids ever appreciated school so much because they miss their friends. And I think, you know, that is the big social component that is missing. I feel really bad for the high school, especially the seniors who won't have that opportunity, that sort of sense of accomplishment. But I know that we're going to do everything that we can to make that up to them. One question I do have, and this may be out of turn as far as timing, because I don't know the exact timing of SATs, but if I remember, recall, there was, there's different sessions of SATs. What is going to go on with that on any upcoming exams?
So I could be wrong and I know that we have high school people on here, but I believe the SATs have been canceled.
Correct. They've been canceled.
So there is no SAT for this year, so that I'm not sure when they'll constitute that. I know universities are accommodating, but the college boards have canceled the SATs.
Yeah. I just didn't know if, you know, there was any discussion about future rescheduling or, I mean, I don't know how it affects entry, are they going to waive or what?
They are going to waive for entry for this year. They understand what the whole country is going through. So, but there is beginning to be preliminary conversations about scheduling SAT and PSAT for the fall. They are kind of waiting, I think, to see what happens in the summer because I don't think they want to get into a situation where they have scheduled them and have to cancel again. So they're kind of waiting, but there has begun to be discussion about fall giving of the test for kids.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, like I said, as a parent, I think I've seen especially the difference between my 12-year-old, who's at the middle school and had already been accustomed to Chromebook and the Google platform, being able to transition very quickly. The elementary school, even the teachers have had to learn a little bit about, you know, I see, I notice every week there's a reorganization of the classroom, they're doing things a little bit more efficiently. And I appreciate that working. They originally weren't having quite as many meetings at set times. As a parent, I appreciate the fact that now they're having a syllabus that basically states what time they're going to be on. It's consistent. We can plan on it. So it's, from that aspect, I think it's great. Do we have work to do? Yeah. And is it comparable to a teacher in the classroom? No. I mean, we're, I'm keeping my eight-year-old, you know, his mind exercised, but it's certainly not, you know, what it is in front of a teacher. That said, we're going to get through this year together and, you know, obviously we're dealt the hand we have, looking forward to next year. The one thing, last thing I'll say is, I do hope that we're, and I know we are, and I see Don on here, we're taking notes on all of this because I think what comes out of this, you know, it's like necessity's mother intervention. I see it in my own work. We weren't very virtual platform-based. We've had some growing pains, but there's a lot of nuggets we can take out of this for the future that we don't have to necessarily abandon once this crisis is done, that, you know, maybe it's not going to be business as usual when we come out of this. Maybe we start looking at, not necessarily, you know, obviously not parents at home teaching their kids, but being able to, you know, if a child has to be out for some sickness or some reason, that we can be more accommodating, even certain family issues that come up, that we can use virtual platforms and some of these tools to keep learning where traditionally it hasn't been so. So I know you're probably all thinking about that. I'm not the only one, but I really appreciate all the work the teachers doing and the districts doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Okay, Dave?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, I'm going to make a statement. The people, the people I see as I walk with my wife around the neighborhood with our masks on and come up and say, hi, David, social distance, are all very happy with what's happening with the schools. And I usually walk around, we usually walk around six o'clock. Sometimes since she's home, we walk around midday and we see a lot of young families and a lot of people who don't even know I'm their school committee person. And they're very happy, they're very happy despite what's happening. Luke, you're right, the children miss their teachers, Madam Chair, they miss their teachers. They miss going to school. They miss the social activity. They miss the fun. They miss the games. They miss having their teachers dance with them and being happy. And it's very sad. But the thing to remember is that these are taxpayers too. I know the council, they like to talk about the taxpayer. But as you said, Mr. Levis, with the grandparents showing up for free lunches for their children, a lot of, a lot of these people are taxpayers and they're very dissatisfied with what occurred the other night, with emotion being tabled. They're just very angry and they're very upset, not with us. But I wish people would take notice of that. And I've known Vinny Raghasta for years.
Dave, can I just interject? I didn't mean to, but we're going to talk about this in another agenda item.
Okay, fine.
I just think it would be more appropriate then.
No problem.
All right.
No problem. So that's, that's all I want to say. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, my dear. Thank you, Mr. Levis, because I was just about ready to say, we're going to talk about that. And you should have been, we should all be discussing the update right now. That being said, before I do ask the public for any comments or questions, I just wanted to say myself that I've been so inspired by what I've seen in our communities from so many different areas, but especially our families, our teachers, our administrators, our students, they're just, I can't even put into words how impressed I am. I follow the listservs from Washington Oak, my neighborhood school, also the middle school and the high school. I follow Twitter. There's just so many amazing things going on that it just, sometimes I'm just tears in my eyes because I just can see how much our teachers love our students and how much our students love their teachers. And it's just heartwarming to see that and it comes across so, so strongly. I know that this is such a difficult, difficult time for all of us. And I just want to say I'm so proud of this community and what you've all been doing. It's just amazing as far as I'm concerned and I'm very inspired. And I do believe that, I mean, I listened to the governor today and to the commissioner and they both said how far ahead we are as a state because we were able to kind of roll out this remote learning and we wanted to have a standard still. We didn't just say, okay, well, we're just going to give up, no more school for the rest of the year. And the fact that you've all put this together and made it work, and that's everybody, it's our students, our parents, our teachers, our administrators, you've all done an awesome job trying to do the best in a really difficult situation. And so I'm really proud of Rhode Island, I'm proud of Coventry, and I'm so really, really glad that we had as much training out there on Chromebooks and that our kids had them in the middle in the high school. I mean, that was a real win-win for this community. And I'm glad to hear that the elementaries are hanging in there as well. And I'm sure there are people in the community that will want to say something or make a comment about what's happening in our schools. My last comment is I have no doubt how much work this is. I'm working remotely from home, but I don't have any children here. I'm by myself, so it's, and even working remotely from home, I seem to be busier than when I'm at work. It seems like there's always something that needs my attention. So I know what my remote life is like, so I can only imagine what some people are going through, trying to do everything and stay on. And I'm really glad to hear that, you know, this asynchronous work has to be that way because I can imagine, you know, with internet wide, you know, bandwidth and whatever, you know, sometimes you just can't all be on. And so I'm really glad that other options are available for our students and our parents. But I think I've probably said enough. So I'm going to, I, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to see that people, Mr. Levis, are you going to be able to tell me who's out there? And maybe you can ask them if they want to speak as opposed to me doing that? I don't know, are there any comments out there? I'm going to, I don't, yeah. It looks like everybody...
I don't see any hands raised, but let me see if I raise a hand. It's my hand.
I don't see anybody's pictures. They're all just...
Yeah, I don't see any hands raised, so if I, I think, I think we're good.
There are no raised hands.
Pardon?
There are no raised hands.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. All right, then I, then I think we can move on to our next item, which is the agenda item number four, the Coventry Teachers Alliance contract discussion. And I will let Mr. Levis start this.
All right. So we, most people will remember, and I promise to be brief, I think this is, where we're going to lead with this is it's really up to the town council now. But I just want to remind the community that the financial town meeting last year, Mr. McGee, the town council president, made a statement about, you know, asking all the bargain units to come back to the table and, you know, and early in the fall, myself with Mrs. Mangiorelli, Mr. Arnett and Mr. Wazika, met with all the union leadership. So from the school department, it was Mrs. Bellmeyer and Mrs. Aronakis. And we met with the police and the municipal and we just basically said that, you know, we couldn't force anybody, but we really wanted to work together, come to the table. And Mrs. Aronakis stated at that meeting that, you know, if they came willing to come to the table, the expectation would be that everybody came to the table, that we talked about being one town, so let's function as one town. Since that time, we had a meeting with Mr. McGee, another member of the council, and we discussed, again, going out and Ms. Mangiorelli and I were there along with Ms. Patno and Sofrio, and we made a comment that we weren't going to balance the budget on the back of the teachers, but at that time, we said, Ms. Mangiorelli had made a statement that we were looking to get a certain amount of money for at least next year. And we started the negotiations and again, let's remind that there's continuing contract language right now. The teachers on their last year of a contract in the SRP, doesn't really make sense for them to come back to the table, but they did. And in good faith, we negotiated a contract that not only saves a half million dollars next year, but sets us up moving forward when you look at compounding salaries. It also puts in place some plan design for healthcare, which hadn't been done in over nine years. That impacts the entire school department, so it impacts administrators, it would impact down the road, it would impact SRP, it would impact every employee. And... And again, the union didn't have to do that. So we think we did an excellent job negotiating a, a contract that was a win-win. And I wanna remind the community too, the last contract that was negotiated over three years, the impact of, of the contract on the budget was about $2.8 million. The inter, I mean, the impact on the contract, I mean, the, of the budgetary impact. So not just the contractual language, the budget was almost $4 million, 3.8. This contract that we presented, that the school committee unanimously, unanimously supported, cost over three years less than a million dollars and the budgetary impact was about $1.6 million, right? So the fact of the matter is that the other, the other night at the town council meeting, the council decided to table the contract. You know, I'm gonna give them the benefit of the doubt. The bottom line is that we negotiated the contract. They have a right to vote it up or down, but I just can't see how they could vote down something that's gonna save us a half million dollars next year. And the fact of the matter is, and I'm not gonna put Ms. Aronakis on the spot, but if I was the president of the union and this, and again, I, you know, this is probably gonna come out wrong and, but what's the incentive to now, if the, if the committee council, and I'm not saying they will, but if they vote it down, what's the incentive to come back? Next year's gonna hit us, cost another half million dollars. And then moving forward, when you took a look at those salaries compounded, by the time we get to, you know, down the road, I mean, it's gonna be millions of dollars. So to me, this is about power, but, you know, that's my opinion. I, I think we just let the, let the chiefs follow they may. If the council does vote it down, then any savings we have this year, my suggestion is the first half million of savings we use to offset this, the decision, potential decision of the council. But again, you know, they have two lawyers working on the contract language, you know, and, and I'm sure they're good lawyers. But, you know, assuming that they'll give good advice, it doesn't make sense, you know, because we hear a lot, you know, we hear a lot about the taxpayers and I gotta tell you, you know, I don't know how to be more transparent as a superintendent of school department. Last year, we sent a letter out to everybody saying, if you had questions about the budget, you could meet with myself or Ms. Mangiorelli and between you and me, Ms. Mangiorelli would have been the better person to meet with, but nobody took us up on. So, you know, I, I'm assuming that, you know, the council will make the right decision, but we put it on the agenda so that the school committee can have, you know, have a say also and that the public can understand what's transpired. So, because you probably didn't understand, I know you couldn't have any input because the council doesn't allow that in their meetings, but you, you probably didn't understand why they took the, the, the contract and tabled it. So that's kind of the public conversation tonight. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. So I'm just gonna ask for comments or questions from the committee first. So Mr. Pearson, did you have anything you'd like to add, question, comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kellunian, do you have anything?
I'm just gonna reiterate what I said before, that I think that the teachers, they, they always come to the table, always. So it's about time that others follow suit. All right, just my comment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murray?
Yeah, I'll also reiterate what I said at our last meeting, which is at this point, and just so the community understands, again, that the teachers' union didn't have to come back to the table, we proactively, as a school committee and district, went to them and said, would you be willing to come to the table? Because we wanna create some sustainability for the district and assist the community, as we said we were gonna do last year during a very difficult budget time. So here we are, we have a contract in place, and I said before, is it perfect? Did I agree with every aspect? I don't think any of us thought it was perfect from any aspect with our union or school committee. That's what I consider a good contract, is everyone sort of, you know, comes to the middle. At this point, if the council decides to, you know, vote this down, then I wanna see a proposal when they vote it down and what they can do better. Sit at the meeting and if you're gonna vote it down, what language specifically would you change to make this better? Because I don't know at this point, you know, offer some solutions because we're going into budget cycle again in a very difficult time because of, you know, this scenario. We've actively worked to get everyone to the table, including the union. And I don't see a lot coming from the town side, and that's not to throw stones, it's a fact. We're gonna, you know, they're gonna have to really justify why they're gonna vote this down. And if it's just because they wanna have more say on a contract that they don't govern, then I'm sorry. But, you know, we, we didn't have to go out and fish on this. We could have let this ride for the next year and come back and negotiated next year in a different environment. We don't know what next year is gonna be. Could be better, could be worse. So I guess my call out is come up with some solutions. You know, my challenge to the council is if you're gonna try to vote this down, come to the meeting with the justification of the public and why we're gonna spend more money this year, or we're gonna have to cut more out of the kids' budgets in our school system or whatever we do to make up that $500,000, because it's real money. And, you know, this isn't the only savings we've looked at. We're, we're gonna be talking about energy tonight, it's gonna save us long-term money. We executed the solar, which is gonna save us money of long term. We, as a committee, we, as a district, have stepped up for the community to try to save tax dollars while maintaining a high level of education. I think that's all we can do. But if we don't get met in the middle on this, then, you know, we're kind of powerless because ultimately the decision lies with council. So if we don't get supported and they don't, you know, wanna offer up those solutions, and I'm not sure what we have to say at this point, but I want the community to know, we are trying. And it's on the community too to reach out to the council and ask questions of them. And if, you know, they disagree with the contract, then they can tell you why. But at this point, the public also needs to be out there and, you know, actively ask questions. Whoever is on this, this meeting right now, I challenge them to be involved. So that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Murray. And finally, Mr. Florio?
Madam Chair, thank you for stopping me, Mr. Levis, because I would have went on. Suspicion, Madam Chair, is that the council believes we are saving money while the kids are remote learning. They feel that we're not paying for subs. They feel, they feel that we're not paying for bus fuel. They feel that we're not paying for buses. They believe that the school department's gonna, will get a windfall. All misconceptions, Madam Chair, all misconceptions. And I think if they communicated with the superintendent or he would have been able to explain the budget. Mrs., Mrs. Magnarelli and Mr. Levis, aside from murdering Renee, Mr. Levis, but she has always been available to answer whatever questions they had. And we're not coming into a windfall, we're, we're barely scraping by. And that $500,000 would have came in awfully handy with what's happening right now and with the other, Mr. Levis, I believe the state has increased our the amount that we owe them, right, has increased the amount from seven, $700,000 to $900,000. So we're not this is, we're not, we're being completely transparent and we don't know what the, we don't know what the final numbers are gonna reveal anyhow because of what's happening. I mean, and to, to not, to hold this contract hostage is not the right thing to do. Everyone negotiated in good faith. The teachers negotiated in good faith. And to do this is absolutely wrong. Those are my comments. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Levis. Thank you, Mr. Pearson, Mr. Murray, Mr. Kellunian. I, I appreciate it. Those are my feelings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Florio. Finally, from me, I think the, the town council has the right to ask questions. I am hopeful that when they come back to reconsider this contract, that they will in fact approve it. To me, it's a no-win situation. I, I mean, it's a win-win situation. Why would they not approve it? I don't think it has anything to do with what Mr. Florio said about whether or not we're going to save money this year. It's, it's not a budget issue, it's about a contract that we were asked to renegotiate. And that was done, and I must say, it was done in a, in a very transparent way, quite honestly. And I think, I think the town council granted they have some questions. Okay, maybe they were unprepared to make a decision last Monday night. I can understand all of that. What I, what I can understand is if they decide not to approve this contract because it will save money for the district next year, which would have, $500,000 that we would have been required to pay per contract. So I am pleading, reaching out to the public to, as Mr. Murray said, you know, call your town councilman. Ask them, you know, where they stand. And I, and, and I'm hopeful that in fact we will get a positive response from the council in the, in the, in the end. Again, to me, it's a win-win, why wouldn't they? What's gonna happen with revenues in this town, I don't think have anything to do with reconciling and saying yes to this budget. We have no idea, no one has a crystal ball as to where we're gonna stand as far as revenues go. But we do know one thing, we have a contract, a present contract that'll cost us $500,000 more next year if we don't go forward with this approved contract. So again, to me, it only makes sense that they would approve it, but that's my final comment. So I will throw it out to the public, ask any questions or have any comments, so please indicate to, well, it looks like I see a hand up. And if you could just identify yourself, your address, just like if we were in a public meeting.
Kelly, your speaker's not on.
Sorry, I, I, I recognize Mrs. Aronakis.
Yeah.
We can't hear you.
She's not muted, but.
Kelly, if you can call into the meeting, that might be an alternative.
Or the other thing, there may be a chat feature, you could ask a question. I'm not sure if we have that.
I don't know. It was more of a state.
Do you have a whiteboard, Kelly? All right.
Well, maybe, is there anybody else that was interested in making a comment or?
I don't see any hands raised.
This is Kimberly Shockley. I am hiding.
A few chats out there.
I don't see a raised feature, but I'm not sure if I can ask something. So I live at 12 Kingswood Drive and I'm wondering, just based on
Hey, Kelly, mute?
Somebody, somebody called, probably Dave.
Kelly, you can call in. You can call into the meeting.
Dave, your microphone, your hot mic.
Sorry.
Sorry, so I'm just wondering, you know, the meeting the other night that was joint with the town council, I think people expected a lot of this conversation to go on and it had a lot of people on it. I'm not sure how many people are calling into this, but there are only about 35 to 40 on the meeting. What are maybe Mr. Levis or anyone else allowed to put out to parents in the system? I think it's necessary that parents know what the teachers were willing to do, that it's a big deal and we shouldn't expect it from them on a regular basis to, as part of a union, come to the table and renegotiate their contract in the middle of it. I think parents and other people in the town need to know this, but right now you have probably your most targeted audience of parents you'll ever have. We're paying really close attention to the schools right now. We're getting regular interactions and when we get them, we're reading them. So I don't know what you're allowed to about this, just to make sure parents are aware of what the teachers were willing to do, whether or not the town chooses to move forward with it.
Mr. Levis, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, so one of the things we can do, Kimberly, that would be helpful that we haven't done, we could post the contract. Typically, we wait till it's approved. But I think what's, what's, just some highlights are, you know, I gave the chronological history in terms of how this came about. You know, our teachers didn't have to come to the table, and, and I also wanna say the SRP, because they're at the table right now. I don't wanna dismiss. You know, and I say this publicly, you remember when I laid off, you know, me, I laid off 383 teachers, right? These are the same teachers that are going above and beyond every single day under these conditions while they're dealing with their own families, right? We work really hard to have a good, positive relationship collectively, collaboratively. We keep that, at least we're being focused on what's in the best interest of students and families. They came to the table and some of the basic concepts, they froze steps for next year, which moving forward, you think about it, that, that, how that compounds salary, right? The biggest part is that, you know, savings of a half million dollars by doing that, but they also agreed to changes in, in, in the benefits plan that'll save us, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars once we get into a couple of years. And that impacts everybody, that's just the teachers, but that also impacts all of our administration. And the third year of the contract, some of the, some of the benefits that they received in terms of salaries, they don't go into the somebody's got their mic on, Sharon? Thanks. So how we, we compensated them was not just in pure salary, but also with like a 403D, which saves us in terms of payroll taxes and pension. So we, we think we did some things that we did some things that benefited us over the course of the three years. I, I don't know if you heard me say early on, this contract, the cost of this contract and the impact on the budget over three years is less than $1.6 million. The contract we're currently in, if we go through to fruition next year, the cost of that contract will be close to, have been close to $4 million, $3.8 million. So we have made some, you know, I think some significant gains and we created some scenarios that were win-win. So again, the third year, we can also have a reopening clause, which means this year they reopened the contract, they didn't have to. The third year, it says either party, either the teachers' union or the administration, the school committee can open the contract. So there's some safeguards in place. The bottom line is, how can we afford to add a half million dollars to the budget next year? You know, that's, that's the bottom line. How can we afford this district? Because I hear, and I don't wanna say rhetoric, because I think everything we do, we're concerned about taxpayers too. You know, and if we don't think we are, then you need to challenge us. But I hear this, the taxpayer, the taxpayer, we've gotta stop coming from a deficit position. And that's what we did. I mean, we've been working on so many fronts. So, you know, we can talk more about, within the administration, with the school committee, about how we can go public, but I really think it has to fall on the council right now. You know, I, I refuse to make the teachers a villain in this and go back to them and say, we're gonna open this up, you know? Council needs to make a decision, so. I know there's a lot there and we didn't answer your question, Kimberly.
I'm just saying, I do think it's great and I do think it should be put out there to people, especially if other unions haven't come to the table with the same willingness.
We don't know, we haven't seen anything. You know, what I can say is that we did exactly what we were gonna do and we put it in, in, in concrete terms. It was unanimously voted, you know, there was a great article in the local paper about it that quoted a couple of our school committee members. I think, you know, we had a nice conversation the night that it was approved. I mean, it's a positive, I think, for us, you know? That comes from a lot of hard work with everybody that's involved, the school committee, the administration, the teachers. supports have, working together, you know, keeping that focus on what's in the best interest of the community. So. But thank you for that.
Kathy, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can. Yeah.
Good. May I speak now?
Yes.
Okay, again, Kelly Aronakis, Nine Sugar Maple Drive, also president of the College of Teachers Alliance. I'm going to say this in the best light possible. I have a nine-year-old son. He's autistic and one of the hardest things to teach him is when you get something that you're not entitled to, you say thank you. I will never forget the most embarrassing moment I had with my son. He was five years old and it was Christmas and we went to grandma's house. And he got a gift from grandma and he got a gift from an aunt and he looked at them and he said, is that it? And I was mortified. So every day I try to drill into his head. When someone gives you something, especially something that you're not entitled to, you say thank you. That's where I kind of am right now. And I, I think from the alliance standpoint, we have close to half of our members who are town residents, whose taxes go up even when their pay goes down. And they came to the table willingly when they did not have to, as many people have done. But since then, times have changed. So I also now have members whose spouses are not employed, whose financial situation, as many in the town and many across the state and the country, are different than when they said, we can try to give a little bit. So the bottom line is my members are having buyer's remorse. So if I'm going to be perfectly frank, if the town council doesn't want a half a million dollar give back, then say no, because I no longer care. And what will happen is I will take the contract that I have. It will cost a half a million dollars more, but my members won't lose any more money and be insulted by somebody saying they give more. So with all due respect, Mr. Murray, you had a very good suggestion. You said if the council doesn't like it, come up with better, come up with a proposal. Negotiations are done. The council's job is to say yea or nay. It's not to renegotiate. It's not to ask for even more. It's either to say thank you, we accept, or no, thank you, we don't want it. But I think it's a slap in the face to every single teacher who's in the last year of their life didn't have to give anything that he chose to. So that's my personal feeling. It's the alliance feeling. I said, I think a lot of members are having buyer's remorse. So if the council turns it down, shame on them. But I think it would be better for my members if they did, because they have more money in their pocket.
Hey Kelly, just to clarify my remark, it wasn't to go back to renegotiation. It's to, what I want them to do is propose where they're going to come up with the rest of the money. I don't expect it to come to a renegotiation, a contract. But what I'd like is if, if they're going to go and say we can afford it to deny the contract, then I want them to figure out where they're going to come up with the money. Because I don't think we necessarily, we've, we've stepped up, so offer that up. You've stepped up, the union stepped up. You know, where does that money come from now? We know we had a tough budget year last year, so, you know, certainly I hear you and that's not what I was proposing. Craig, can I just ask a question? Kim's, Kim's question previously, I don't know if we totally answered her question. Is there a way to create a fact sheet? And it's, it's not marketing, it's just information. I think we're asking the public to dig deeper and understand the contract. But, you know, honestly, if I was sitting, if I wasn't on the school committee, I probably wouldn't know a thing about what was talked about at last meeting because it was a teleconference. Is there any way that we can at least put something on the website that just says, here's what the new contract does versus the existing contract, which is already posted in public, you know, public information? It's not a marketing piece. It's facts and just if people want to reach out, they at least know what they're talking about. Is that a possibility? I don't know.
I do have to remind everyone, we have a confidentiality clause. It's still the member's contract. It's not ratified. That would be breaking ground rules. I mean, we can say there's a half a million dollar give back, that's true. But any negotiation that happens is confidential until all parties have had the chance to vote on it.
That's the answer I'm looking for.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kelly. Before we move on to anybody else, Kimberly Shockley, if you could just tell us your address for the record, I don't know if you're still listening.
It's 12 Kingswood Drive.
Okay, thank you. You might have said that. I just don't remember.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions out there? Do you see Mr. Levis?
No, no other hands. Do you mind if I just had a quick comment?
Sure.
Just that, you know, I, I agree. I think that, you know, and I probably gave more information than, 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 than I should. But the bottom line is it's 500,000 dollars. And like I said, you know, when we get into the budget conversation, I think we're going to talk about things that we've done to move forward, to save the district money, to also bring revenue to the district. And, you know, that's the bottom line is that I, I agree with, with Mr. Murray's comment about like, where are they going to come forward with the money? Because I don't think they're even thinking about that. I think, you know, my experience with the council is it's just cut, cut, cut. And, you know, they, they come across caring about the taxpayers. But I think what we're doing and how we're servicing this community is how you care about taxpayers, you know? And again, as Kelly said, 50% of our, more than 50% of our employees are taxpayers in this community, you know? So anyways, I, I, I think it's kind of, we let it land where it's going to land. And I, I think the taxpayers need to understand that, you know, it's a half million dollar hit next year. And once it does, you know, hopefully it gets ratified, everybody will see that the changes that are in there that benefit everybody. So it's, I think it's a win-win contract. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levis. Seeing that we don't have any other further comments or questions, I think we can move on to agenda item number five, the natural gas and electricity supplier bids discussion and vote. That was our reference number one. I'm sure the school committee has had a chance to look at it. And I'm not sure, Mr. Levis, did you want to start?
I'm going to start and turn it over to Ms. Ms. Mangielli, but what I want to say, what I want to say is that the kind, what we're going to present to you tonight, you guys remember Dan, Mr. Dan Joyce from Balanced Rock Energy? He's the one that helped us negotiate, I think, that deal that's going to save the community between the school department and the community, between eight and 11 million dollars over the course of 25 years, which I think is significant. I also want to point out, we offered that agreement to the town too. They could have bought in with that, you know, you know, and I'm sure, hopefully they will at a certain time. So we've been trying to work collaboratively with the town on that. What we're presenting to you today and what we're going to ask you to vote on afterwards, those are conditions based on, we have current contracts for natural gas and for electricity. And when those contracts come to an end, what we're doing is by voting on it today, once we get the agreement worked out, we lock in those prices, but we lock in those prices for when the contract ends. That's the key to what we're doing. That's why Ms. Mangielli can add to that. But that was the urgency that we, not the urgency, but I think we know the times we're in. People think of school departments as usually just using up all the tax dollars. We remember the picture that they put up with, here's your tax dollars and dollar bill and this is what the school. Where we've been working, despite everything that's going on, we've continued to work on, on, on scenarios that save the, the district funds, which benefits the taxpayers, allows us to really allocate our dollars to where it belongs. You know, anything that's going to benefit students. So tonight we're going to present that, you know, you know that we've received over a million dollars within less than a year in competitive grants. We talked about the net metering piece. So tonight's another part of that, that this deal can save us 100,000 dollars a year. Again, that's a teacher, that's a lot of supplies, that's a lot of support for students. And again, we're not, you know, this is the type of work that we continue to do. So having said that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Mangielli. If you don't mind, Sarah.
Nope, I'm here. So I'm just going to apologize in advance if there's a lot of background noise. They weren't lying when they said this time of night was the witching hour, so just bear with me. But I think the, the proposal is pretty self-explanatory. When we had gone this direction at looking at energy savings, this was an added benefit. When we went out to bid, the current market allowed for some potential cost savings. And despite the crisis that we're in right now, I think we also have an opportunity as a community to stop and put some steps in place to ensure our condition is improved when we come out of this. And I think that this is one of them. The natural gas would take effect sooner rather than later. That would be September 2020. And then the electric would start December 2021. Obviously that December 2021 is a little bit of a distance out there. But I, I think we are seeing unprecedented lows and we really don't know how long that's going to continue. And I think that it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't look to secure some of these known savings going forward. So that, that's pretty much, you know, it, again, the, the recommendation is listed there. And then if there's any other specific questions, you know, we can, we can go over those as well.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. So I guess we'll just start and ask the school committee if you have any questions for either Mr. Levis or Sarah. So I guess we can start with Mr. Pearson. Do you have any questions about the bid or concerns?
No, no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kellunian, any questions?
I do not have any questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Murray.
You always know I have a question. So I communicated with Mr. Levis today and asked him to put me in touch with Dan Joyce, just so I could better understand the contract and what it entailed and how the selection was made. So I just wanted to inform the committee of what I talked about with him. So obviously the wholesale market's low and due to a couple of factors, obviously the winter's been warm. The COVID crisis, energy prices across the board are low. You saw the graph right now is a good time to buy in and lock in the contract. So just so everyone understands, we have a current contract. We're locking in a cost now for future. So some of this is, what, six months from now on the gas side, electric's like a year and a half. But the benefit is, based on my discussion with Dan and everyone knows right now, interest rates are low, everything's low. His feeling is it's, it's going to grow up probably from here, so we're going to be locked in for, for several years. I asked him why he chose a three-year timeframe. And he kind of felt it was the best balance of extending our contract and flattening our rate over that duration while giving up a little bit of savings on the two-year. So if you saw, I think our best return, I'm going to pull it up right now, was on a two-year. But I think it was, is ultimately a better balance to keep that flattened out for another 12 months, which I think is, is better for us and I, I agree with that. Right now I think we're plugged into RIAS, right? Craig, as far as their purchase agreement, and I asked them why maybe they weren't as competitive. And one of the reasons is they typically wait until the contract expires in order to solicit pricing and they typically work with the same vendor over and over. So what happens over time is without that competitive environment, those prices sometimes elevate. So I think, but we did the right thing. I want to commend the, the administration for farming this out and trying to save us some money. The only concern I had was that, my understanding in talking with Dan was that we're not going to actually, the prices we received are not locked in. So they're for bid purposes, but we won't lock in an actual cost because everything's determined on the day of the market. So while prices might be trading at a certain amount now, they may not trade that way in a week or two weeks when we lock this agreement in. So the only caution I have, and I did reach out late to Sarah, and I do apologize, Sarah, on this was just if we were going to vote on this, he had mentioned that if it may come down at the last minute, that we may even switch companies if, because they're going to go out for an offer. And correct me if I'm wrong, Sarah and Craig, if I'm stating this incorrectly, that the day of, or prior to, we're going to go out for best offer on the energy prices. And I know that direct energy was the second in line. And he had mentioned if direct energy comes back at the last minute with a better price, that we may go in that direction. So by approving this tonight, I just want to make sure we don't, we're not necessarily approving a vendor, that we're, we're sort of approving a price with a duration, so 36 months. And he recommended at 6.4%, 6.5 cents per kilowatt. And the gas at 36 months at 550 per decathirm. So it's like a ceiling. We're, we're proving a ceiling on the price cap. Whoever the vendor is who gets under that cap, the lowest certain price would be what we're actually approving. Does that make sense? Sarah, you want to chime in on that?
Yes, yes. And so we should probably make an amendment to the motion because I believe we did list the EDF and direct energy, but you're correct. So in just to, from a timeline perspective, we had started this a little while ago, but we just had the final conference call with Mr. Joyce on Monday and, and expedited this to get it going because we knew that this is the right time. So for the school committee, I, I might recommend making an amendment to say something along the lines that we recommend accepting the lowest 36-month agreement for natural gas and electricity and just cross out the, the names, which will give us the flexibility to lock in at the absolute lowest contract.
Right. And that's, that's the intent. I want to be able to drive that price down as much as possible and not, you know, we're not going to have a second approval process on this and I want to have to frame you in, give you some flexibility when that final pricing comes down. So that's, that's all I had to say on that. Hopefully it's constructive. So we may want to amend the motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio, any questions?
No questions, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Craig, did you want to say something? Are you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you.
So is there a motion that someone would like to make?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that the natural gas and solar. No, what is it? Craig is shaking your head. What's the motion?
Well, I think we're going to amend the motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, I make a motion, I make a motion that we amend the motion.
No, we still have to. Not amending the motion because we haven't made the motion yet. What we're doing is we're rewriting the motion that you see in front of your, of you, which changes the vendor, so that the vendors are not listed. Just that we're going to recommend the agreement when the, of, of the lowest price for electricity and natural gas from BlackRock.
For a duration of 36 months.
For the duration of 36 months. And you can just say, you know, so, do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, make a motion to accept Balanced Rock Energy's recommendation to enter into a new 36-month agreement for electricity supply with EDF and to enter into a 36-month agreement for natural blast supply with direct energy.
Second the motion.
No, no.
I'm not sure that's what we want. So you want to amend it now?
Sarah, you want to say?
Look, this was your, this was your.
Why don't I, why don't I take over here? Madam Chair, I make a motion that we enter into a new 36-month agreement for electric and gas supply at the lowest possible cost.
Second the motion.
Okay. Okay, so before I call, before I call for the vote, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment or ask any question on this motion? Mr. Pearson, I see your hand up.
Yeah, I'm thoroughly confused now, so I need some clarification. This went out to bid and we got bids back and we're supposed to be approving the bids, but now we're eliminating the company's names from the bids so we can approve an amount after the bidding fact. I have a question of legality. This doesn't sound right to me. Can someone please?
Yeah.
Say now this is legal.
So I'll, I'll, I'll just speak to it and Sarah.
Ken, wait, I'm sorry. Nope, sorry, not, not to. I'm chewing your reputation, Mr. Murray, but you're not the person I want to hear from on this. I, I really want either an attorney to speak to this or someone.
This is Johnny Anderson. I'm on the call. The motion is a proper motion. What you're doing is you're giving the authority to the administration to select on the day that you enter into an agreement, the lowest price, given the fact that the market for electricity and natural gas literally changes day to day. You're authorizing them to go forward, but they need to go forward with whoever gives you the best price on that day.
Okay, as long as it's legal, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, any, anything else from the committee? Any questions before we call for a vote? Anything from the public? Okay, all in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, everybody aye. Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for the clarification, Mr. Murray. Moving on to agenda item number six, the F-20 budget update. Did you want to start this, Mr. Levis?
Yes, and I don't know if, it'll be fairly brief. I know there's a lot of conversation about what we're going to save. You know, when we come back in a couple of weeks, we'll have more, hopefully more clarification. We know that, you know, Mr. Florio had mentioned a few things before, some savings in transportation, though we're not exactly sure what those are. We're still working, you know, Mr. Anderson's involved. We're still, we received some correspondence from the bus company tonight. Worked with Mr. Anderson, myself, Mr. Martin, and Miss Manjrielli to see what we're legally responsible for, you know, with transportation, you know, in good faith, we paid going forward through March. We found out that, through the end of March. And I found out on April 1st that the bus drivers were notified they were going to be laid off on March 13th. In fact, I had, I think some of the committee members had received an email from one of the bus drivers. And nobody shared any information. And I say again, with us, we found out they were a third party, by the way. So we have to work this out, that will it be savings in transportation? Yes. I don't know what those savings will be. We're going to do what we need to do from a legal perspective. But in good faith, we've always been, and you've heard me speak very highly of the bus company. They've been very patient around, especially with the propane situation. And, you know, the lack of swiftness by the town in terms of getting approval to have a propane tank there. So that's transportation. We know we'll have some savings in terms of substitutes. You know, we're not sure what all of our expenses will be. You know, we're still looking at potentially purchasing some Chromebooks, but we're kind of patient, waiting to see if we'll get stimulus money, how we can utilize that. We may have some additional expenses that we may need to do in terms of some of the cleaning procedures that we might have to do in our buildings. You know, there was some, looking at some national conversations about even how do you clean your ducts and things like that. And so I'm not comfortable coming forward, you know, in terms of the entire FY-20 budget update. You know, we still have the ransomware. We're working with a third party, an insurance, I don't want to say investigator, but they're a company that's working on our behalf to help us put the claim together, to make sure that we get complete reimbursement for everything, you know. You know, we can't forget that that transpired in the summer and we were still working on that in the fall. You know, that's been kind of dragging on because of COVID-19. So we have to look at that. So again, at some point, we'll be able to come back and give a much clearer picture about the FY-20 budget. But those are the things, I just want to be clear that we don't have all the numbers yet. What makes it more challenging is just working on our systems that we have. You know, we have a Phoenix financial platform, which is pretty much, you know, dead in the water. And yet we're transitioning over to Keystone. So not making excuses, this is our reality. But we will keep you posted on that. But I'm not able today to say, we know that what these are the savings are going to be moving forward into next year. So I just wanted to throw those things out. That's around the FY-20. Sarah, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
Right, so I think one of the keys was that we were truly waiting on some decisions at a state level to have a good handle on what the rest of the school year was going to look like before we could move forward in one direction or another with reoccurring expenses or vendor contracts and how we are going to handle all of that. So now that we do, and I've said, I believe, in my, the memo that I had sent out a week or two ago, April will be the telling month because that will truly be the month that most of our buildings are primarily vacant. We should see the decrease in utilities. We can make some decisions going forward now that we know that we'll be doing virtual learning the rest of the year. So long and short, do I anticipate a surplus in FY-20 in the general fund? Most likely, yes. I do want to remind the school committee that we still have a deficit in the school lunch. We are hoping that that will be narrowed with some of the events that are going on, but that still is in existence. And we do need to look at what will be coming up next year, not just in the terms of our regular known expenditures right now, but everything that's not on our radar and additional services that we may need to require, both to service our students and to service our facilities next year. So at the next school committee meeting, I think we'll be able to make some more decisions and have more information. But we are watching it closely right now. We just needed a little bit more time to firm up some information.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Mr. Levis. From the school committee, Mr. Pearson, did you have any questions for either of those folks?
Maybe more of a statement, not a question yet because the decision just came down today. So I don't want to throw anyone a curveball. But yes, by the next meeting, I do expect more information on this and really need to start putting together a plan of what the rest of the school year looks like as far as resources and what we're going to do with them. It's nice to hear you're thinking about it. I think the committee really needs to start seeing something in writing about what's going on. Details, we need details, thank you.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Pearson, though, just for clarification?
Sure.
So when you say the rest of the year, can you give me an example of what you're looking at?
The rest of the school year is.
No, but in resources, when you talk about resources.
Did you shut the heat off at the high school? I kind of want that level of granularity. So can we start to put something like that together?
Okay. All right, thank you. Donna, did you have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Mr. Murray, anything?
I appreciate Mr. Pearson's comment. You know, I understand we need to figure out the recapture on some of this. And I know, if nothing else, that we can explain to the public because there is a perception out there, well, you know, nobody's working in the building, so they must not be working. And everyone is working. And as everybody knows, the primary driver of our budget is salaries. We're in human capital business here. So while buildings cost us money, as many know, we haven't actually spent a lot of money except for our operating costs in the buildings. So, but there will certainly be some recapture rate. The one thing I'll just put out there and I'll also caution, and just to bounce up what Sarah said, is we don't know what balls are going to come and drop over the next coming months. So for instance, the state might be, is usually good at coming up with, for every action is an equal and opposite reaction. So for instance, they may raise the level of custodians that have to be mandatory in schools to clean them. There may be testing that needs to be done. There may be certain procedures in order to allow kids to go in school, which means investment technologies to be able to even let kids in the door. We don't know. So what I'd hate to see happen is certain members of council or even ourselves kind of take the stance of, okay, let's shave that money off. Or even if we figure out that recapture, that's money can just go back into the pot, only because, you know, the unknown might come back on us, in which case it's not a savings. We have more expenditure that's just going to come and hurt us next year. So these things have a ripple effect. So I know we all kind of are thinking that, but I'm just putting that out there as just a cautionary that, you know, just because we might even realize those savings after we analyze, there's still a danger in sort of looking at that recapture as something to be scooped. So otherwise, thanks for your work on the budget, Sarah. I know it's always tough. I saw the number on the state side change a little bit again. Well, that, I guess my last question is from you. How, are we going to get another update from the state or is, are we pretty much locked in at this point?
So, and this is, I think, the next agenda item, FY-21 budget. But I don't mind talking about them both in conjunction because I think they're, where we're at right now, they're kind of blending together. But no, that should be the final number unless there is a change in what is happening at the state level as far as whether or not they're going to not move forward with pushing any new budgets forward. Unfortunately, I would expect that if we did a, if we did a new free and reduced price lunch cap right now, thank you, honey, sorry. You might see those numbers increase. Unfortunately, you know, there's a March 1 capture date. So we could see some potential changes going forward, but I don't anticipate any changes in the state aid for next year.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Florio, about the F-20 budget, anything?
Well, Mr. Levis and I discussed this. We discussed it at length. And I don't know. We don't know what the budget's going to be yet. And we have a best-case scenario, but we can't, and I agree with Craig entirely. We can't determine what our expenses are going to be because it's just too soon. We don't know what we're going to get out of this. If anything, we may have to pay more. So I have no questions, Madam Chair. I'm just, I'm just saying what I believe, that we're going, we will be transparent. But we don't know. We don't know. Am I correct on this, Sarah? We just don't know what we're getting from the federal government. And we know the state is going to press even more. So I just don't know. You?
No, I mean, there's just, there's still too much up in the air. We know that in just a few short weeks, we had 30 more unemployment claims that were filed, but I haven't seen that bill to come in. So, you know, we know that we're going to save in subcosts, but we don't know what our exposure is going to be on the unemployment side. And unemployment is approving a lot of claims that they may or may not have otherwise approved, you know. So we just, we truly don't know how this is all going to shake out yet. But in another week or two, I think we'll come forward with our best recommendations. You know, and when we get to the FY-21 budget topic, I will caution, you know, the school committee about how we are going to look to utilize any potential savings from this year for next year because we certainly, you know, as I said, with the natural gas and electric, we, this is a crisis, but we also have the opportunity to take some steps that may or may not have been done otherwise.
Thank you, Sarah. That's it, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Were there any questions from the public before we move on? Are any comments?
See any hands up?
You don't see anything?
No hands up.
No hands up, all right, thank you. So I guess we can move on to the F-21 budget.
So I'm just going to open that. I'm sorry, I'll open it, I'll turn it over to Sarah. So again, we know in a couple of weeks, we'll have more information. I think one of the big questions, I know, you know, for us has to be the contract. And we said all along, I'm not going to, we're not going to balance this budget on the backs of the educators. I also want to remind the council that, you know, this comes up often about administrators. You know, we were, the last data that we have from UCOA in terms of looking at the districts, that we are 58 out of 59 in terms of administrators because that includes charter schools. I know, you know, people get caught up in numbers, but when you look at, you know, the certified administrators that we have, that's, I think that's important for this community to understand. Because a lot of times I get spend more time defending positions that don't exist than, you know, what is real, the facts and the truth. In the next school committee meeting, we have work to do. We've been looking at all of our numbers across the board, elementary, middle, high school. I think by the next school committee meeting, we'll have, we'll come forward and talk to you about positions that will, you know, will be eliminating based on, totally based on the needs in terms of our student population. So in elementary school, we have some tough decisions to make because we just switched over to a new registration program. We, our kindergarten enrollment is lower than normal, but we also know that most of that comes in the summertime. Somebody brought up a good point, I think Mr. Murray brought it up, is that there's no way, I mean, this community in the past has chosen to eliminate over 10 custodial positions in facilities. There's no way we could open school and provide the disinfectant, the sanitation that we need without probably adding nine or 10 custodians, right? We made some modifications the last few weeks scrambling to try to provide support. So those are things we need to think about that aren't in this budget. We know that the governor mentioned and other people had mentioned about testing, right? That we know we may need some technology that we're hoping we could use some stimulus money for. So there's a lot that we don't know moving forward. So, you know, and again, we challenge the community to look at, look at our budget, ask questions, to hold us accountable. We sent that letter out last year inviting individuals to come in and speak with us. You know, we don't know what the opening of school's going to look like, you know. How can you do distance learning or social distancing in our schools? I mean, I don't even know. I threw out like, you know, I think I was having a conversation with Mrs. Evernakis the other day about, you know, does that mean we have like kids come to school every other day? Because even if we did that, how does that address the safety of our staff? You know, we see the value of having a staff that has, is a skilled senior staff. We've seen that in the rollout of our distance learning. But what does that mean? You know, because we have a lot of people that are of that age that are in that high-risk category. So, you know, they're saying that there'll be a resurgence in the fall, potentially. Dr. Fauci was saying that. So there's a lot of things we don't know, you know. So as time goes on, and like I said, we'll be able to come forward, hopefully in the next school committee meeting, which I believe is 14th of May, tentatively. And we'll be able to talk about staffing at that time. But, you know, we, reminding, and I think, Mr. Pearson, you brought this up at a public meeting about reminding the council, I believe it was, that we've already made cuts in the budget. We've made approximately to date $1.5 million cuts. That's if we get the amount we're asking for. If that contract doesn't pass, right, that's another half million. And, you know, and I've said publicly, I'm not going before, you know, you know, look at what's going on in this community now. Look at the effort that our entire school community, you know. By the way, our schools aren't, students aren't in there, but our custodians are working their butts off in every single school right now. Again, you know, we look at the low numbers we have. So, but they're doing, what's the word, beautification or beatification? I can never say it. But they're really improving the quality, the interiors of our buildings. You know, they've done a phenomenal job. So we have a lot of variables moving forward and a lot of unknowns that we probably won't even budget for, but they're our reality. The good, the positive thing is we're not any different than anybody else. We may not have this surplus. I read in editorial, in a paper about North Kingston, it has $2 million, and they're still looking for $1.4 million. Well, as Miss Manjrielli said, we know that we're going to have a deficit with our food service. We've already cut $1.5 million of our budget. And, you know, we're still requesting, you know, a significant amount from the town. So again, in two weeks, I think we'll have a better understanding of some areas. But it's, there's still a lot of moving parts and we promise to be as transparent as possible. So, all right, I'll turn it over to Miss Manjrielli, apologize for that.
So I think just to highlight, obviously, the most significant change from the last budget that was presented was that we got our final state education aid numbers. So in the state aid column, you'll see that the projected change is now $896,000. Our formula aid did decrease $919,000, but we had an increase in our, the categorical aid that we'll receive, which brings the net decrease down to the $896,000. So we haven't changed a whole lot in the budget. The request from the town is still at the $1.8 million. To get to that request, to get to that budget, we've had to cut out from our budget about $1.5 million of expenses. And that is a combination of retirement and the contractual changes. So that would be an additional half million dollars that we would have to pick up if the council votes that down. And then we went through the budget and reviewed staffing and reviewed other areas that we thought we could trim back. So there's not too, too much new here. But I did want to pause and make sure that the committee has a really good handle on what could happen should the decision be made to take any savings that we experience this fiscal year. Should the decision be made to take any savings that we experience this fiscal year? And even more importantly, any stimulus money? And the council chooses to use that money to decrease the appropriation that they give us? That will, without question, set us up for a structural deficit that I don't believe that we will be able to dig out of. There is no doubt that come July, we are going to experience additional costs, whether it be custodial staff, whether it will be special education services or remediation, or whatever will need to be done to get our students back on the same playing field, knowing that every family is doing the best they can right now. And, and the gap between kids is most likely going to widen right now. And we will have to come up with a way to narrow that. The budget that was prepared is to support operations, assuming that it was quote unquote, the status quo for next year. We're not in a status quo. The stimulus money is in recognition of that, the fact that we are not in the status quo. When the American reinvestment, uh, money came in in two thousand and nine, I wasn't with Coventry, but I was adamant that that money not be used to fund general operations. It should be used for one-time expenditures, whether it's equipment, such as expanding potentially our one-to-one devices down to elementary schools so we're better prepared, or remediation services that we know we'll need for a, for a period of time, and then they'll go away. If we try and take that money and fund operations that we know are going to be ongoing with money that we know is not going to be a continuous revenue stream, we will set ourselves back both as a school district and as a community. And I think that it is the right thing to do to continue on with the budget that we need and know that any savings we receive or any stimulus funds we receive will be utilized to put ourselves in better situations or in a better situation to narrow the gap with our students, improve our facilities, improve our equipment. And then when that stimulus money drives up, we're not scrambling to, to try and find that additional fund as a gap. So I just, while we roll out whatever potential savings come from FY20, I just want you to be aware that we have the opportunity now to make changes for our community to the better going forward despite these changes. But if we make that decision to cut that appropriation and drop backwards, I think we'll, I think we could hurt ourselves. So unless there's questions, you know, that, that's pretty much all I wanted to say about the FY21 budget.
All right, thank you, Sarah. From the school committee perspective, are there any questions for Sarah? I'll start with Mr. Pearson.
Questions for Craig and Sarah. There's information that has been circulated from one of the town council members that the, the council leadership and the, the interim town manager are currently trying to level set the bu, you know, have a zero percent increase on the school and the town budget. This is a, I've heard this before, you know, when we had this leadership previously, a few years back. So this is nothing new, nothing surprising. But given the current economic situation, given our current struggles we're already facing for fiscal year twenty-one's budget, what, what communications are you having with the town side right now? And, and can you explain? Have they talked to you about their efforts to go for a zero percent increase?
Uh, let me just answer first and then Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've heard that the council wants zero. I have not seen documentation. I have not.
Council leader, leadership, they haven't discussed that in open session, so.
No, 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 but I'm saying, yeah, the council, I, I don't, okay, leadership. I, there hasn't been names given, so I'm referring to generally. But I haven't heard Mr. Wazika or Mr. Arnett, who I have to say, you know, and this is one of the things where I'm gonna be like Moses parting the sea. I shouldn't say, I'm not Moses, but, um, that, Mr. Arnett and, and Mr. Wazika have been extremely. What's the word? Coming with us, they've been, you know, effective, effectively communicating, you know, and, and ongoing through this process. So, um, again, I haven't received any documentation. So I don't know, Sarah, if you've received anything.
No, I haven't received, um, I haven't received any documentation. I think that we've heard the buzz. I don't, I don't know if the buzz is anything new that we've heard because I know council typically wants to keep the budget as low as possible, and, and I understand and respect that. What that would mean, if we had to bring that back to zero, we would be cutting out almost three point four million dollars from this budget. I can say that I have absolutely no way of coming up with a cut like that. I think it was pretty impressive. I'll be honest with you, I felt good going into this budget year because the unions came to the table with us and we really went through to make cuts that were necessary. I, I can't even begin to make a recommendation where we would get an additional one point eight million dollars just to fund normal operations. And again, we don't know what we don't know. So until we hear anything, um, that, that our, our appropriation is going to be less, we won't even begin to budget for that, truly. I, I don't even know where we would begin. But no, I have not been communicated, that's not been communicated, that that is a, that it's something that's happening.
All right, it, again, the information's out there. So if you could, I just ask that you be proactive on this and not wait for them to, to drop the hammer on us and, and maybe you reach out to them and, and just find out what, what is the real story.
And we do, we're continuing our meetings on Monday mornings. We just had one this Monday. So we will make sure that we specifically ask the question on Monday. But we have been working so well with Ms. Arnett and Mr. Wazika that I would have thought that if, if that was a definite direction that they were going, that they would have told us that when we just had the conversation. But we will make sure that that's the specific, um, point that we discuss.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mrs. Calounian, did you have any questions or comments about the upcoming budget?
The only comment I had is I agree with Sarah is if they, they wanna use money that is just given to us to fund. It's not gonna work. That's what happened the last time when, you know, we, we were given money, the, the extra money that we were supposed to get and, and we didn't. And then they were like, well, we can level fund you, we can level fund you. And then we're, we're in this boat. So I agree with you there, Sarah. We, we can't, we have to, you know, we have to get some, some type of money. We can't just go and use money that it was given to us as a one-time thing and then not be able to fund anything later on. So that's just my comment.
All right.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Yes.
Do you mind just, so, you know, Sarah mentioned stimulus money versus surplus. And, you know, right, the stimulus money is not gonna be able to fill. We, I think there'll be stipulations. We were on a call today, I think I mentioned earlier, Sarah, myself, Lori, and, um, we were on a call with, uh, the Secretary of Education and Deputy Secretaries. And I think it's pretty clear, if we get stimulus money, which we will get some this year, it can be used for, um, as Sarah said, we could probably do something in terms of, uh, those gaps we identify in putting together some type of summer programming this summer, or programming this summer to address those needs. We could use it for anything COVID-19 related this year, but we could also use it, um, to increase, if you choose to go purchase devices for the elementary school. So I think that money, we're gonna have a control over how we spend that. The concern is if we have a significant surplus and it's used just to fill a hole, then going into the next year, just need to be clear. But I also feel that, you know, Kimberly Shockley had brought up before, what we could do with the council. These are the type of conversations where I feel it's important to have the public address the council. You know, I know it's hard to do in their format right now because they don't allow comment. But I can't, doesn't preclude you from picking up the phone and calling your, your district council person. So, um, you know, again, I, I appreciate Mr. Pearson saying that that there's actually documents circulating, because I've heard that, but I hear that all the time. You know, I hear the, you know, what I call rhetoric because I, it insinuates that we don't care about the taxpayer. It insinuates that we don't put any effort into our budget. And let me remind people that in this FY21 budget, at some point, we hope that those savings and net metering will kick in. What we just discussed and approved tonight, that those funds will start to kick in, the savings on supply of energy. And at the next school committee meeting, we're gonna be bringing forward a proposal around LED lights that, uh, in the past, those type of saving, those type of programs have been funded through bonds here. We're gonna fund it actually through, you know, uh, through, you know, our, our appropriations at, at where it'll be a positive cash flow for us. So there's still, despite everything that's going on, you don't see that doom and gloom type of leadership, I think, from the school committee and, and from, you know, the school, uh, department. And I, I think that's important for the community to recognize, so. Anyways.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Murray.
I think I said my piece pretty much earlier. You know where I stand. Stand behind the budget. I think Sarah, to Sarah's point, as far as that, we, if we get any stimulus money or if we get any additional funds out of this, I agree with Sarah, like, really need to hold the line on that money being used, what it's intended for. And, you know, listen, sometimes you're given a gift at the end of a really bad situation. You don't squander it. And, and we have, you know, correct, we have a structural deficit now. You know, if you look at our budget, we're having to make cuts year after year after year and make really hard decisions. So if we're able to get ourselves reshored up, and I know this budget, the only thing I'll put out to the public, whoever's listening or who decides to listen, I know it's gonna be a tough year. I know people are out of work. I know hearing a tax increase is not gonna be what they wanna hear in this, in this economy. Not right now. But if it's math, the math doesn't go away. We have to have teachers in classrooms, we have certain services we provide as a town. If we don't fund it now, it's only gonna catch up with us threefold later, and we've seen that. So my only pitch to the, to the, to the town as a whole is, you know, try to have some forethought. While it, it seems to ease the pain to have somebody say, yeah, we won't do anything this year, zero tax increase, well, it always is, as I mentioned earlier, there's always a cause and effect. And, and by doing that, you're just setting us up for further failure or problems down the road, and then we'll be questioning why. So I really hope, you know, Sarah's done a great job. I think we all have the confidence in her to run the math. She's done a great job so far. And if we look at the numbers and we really look at what's going on, I think in honesty with ourselves, what we're setting up this year is a realistic budget and that unfortunately asks the taxpayers to, to provide some, some funding upfront for this year, but hopefully over the long term will pay off. So, um, thank you for your work, Sarah, and we'll continue to support.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Florio.
Mr. Pearson is absolutely correct. That's what the council is considering. They're considering a zero percent tax increase. And I have to tell you, it's very scary. It's very scary if you're on the school committee, if you, if you love education, if you love children. This, this council is considering, I absolutely agree with him, a zero percent tax increase. I don't, I'm not saying they don't care about children. I'm not saying they don't care about the school committee. I'm not saying they don't care about schools. That's what they're looking at. Zero percent tax increase. And. I'm not. I believe the school department needs the money. I don't think the tax increase that will be done is an unbearable burden on anyone. And, uh. That's all I have to say, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Florio.
Thank, and thank you, thank you, Mrs. Mangielli.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. Um, my two cents is that I support the budget that's been put forward. And hopefully the teacher contract, in fact, will be ratified by the town, and that'll be five hundred thousand dollars less that we have to cut. Um, I think the school committee has done its, the administration has done its job as far as making the cuts that are always painful. Like, I do, I've been on this committee long enough to know that when you get zero new funds in any given year, that, that causes such a deficit and a structural deficit for the future that you can't get out of. We've, we've had several years of just plain maintenance of effort. And, and, and that is one of the reasons why our structural deficit really is where it is. And, and we've done so much cutting over the years that there's nothing more to cut. And so, um, I am very hopeful that the town council sees clear that, um, that they need to support this budget in whatever way they can. And so, and it's actually, the, the way they can do it is to give us the amount of money that is needed. So that being said, I look forward to, to, you know, looking to see, um, the final figures on, on twenty-one when, um, more work is done, maybe at the next school committee, we'll have some more information as well. But again, you can't use any kind of stimulus money or savings for one, except for one-time things. You cannot be, it cannot be part of your operational budget because it just sets you up for structural deficits that will never go away and we'll be facing this year after year after year. So I think we have to do the right thing and not, not go forward with a structural deficit. Um, is there anything from the public? Mr. Levis, do you see any hands up from anyone?
I don't, I don't see any hands up. I, I just would, would like to make a quick comment based on what Mr. Florio had said, that, you know, I'd like to believe that the council cares. And I've heard some, you know, inspiring speeches at town meetings, town fin, financial town meetings. But I think it's, you know. The, this is gonna be drawing the line in the sand. You know, we, we can't go backwards. This is, you know, it's, it's, it's always deficit, deficit, you know, woe is me, and I get it. But th, these are decisions we're making for the future, right? These are decisions we're making for the most important resources community has. And, um, you know, I, I think, you know, we have to stand strong together and, uh, you know, and I'll go back to this, and not because Ms. Neri Nekis is here, but we wouldn't be sitting here with the budget we have this year if it wasn't for the, the teachers rallying, the, the families and, you know, because it wasn't happening, you know? It wasn't happening. And, and, and I say that all the time. I'm not gonna rely on that happening again, you know? So I'm hoping that the community at large sees the value. I've had so many people come up to me and say, you know, I didn't vote for the budget before, but I'll never, I never will challenge what teachers do and what they make. You know, and I'm not saying that's everybody, but I've had many, many individuals say that. They grab and go. You know, like I said, we have many seniors who probably didn't vote for the budget before who are now raising their children, grandchildren, educating them. So the, the, the tide have turned. If the teachers were to stop today, if the school department was to stop today, providing the resources and the support that they are to this community, I can't imagine where they'd be at. And I think the community realizes that. So I'm hoping that people speak up and challenge the status quo. But, um, you know, again, I'm, I'm not a resident. You know, I live in a town and I have my involvement in the community I live in, you know? But I, I'm passionate, like many people are about this community. We've seen the brilliance of this community the last six weeks, and I'm hoping that that continues. You know, and, you know, last thing I'll say is that somebody had mentioned to me, like, almost apology, we should be apologetic because we're working, you know? And, and I applaud everybody that's working in the school department because I feel like we're putting other people first, and that's important. That's what we should do. We're in the, the people business and, um, while we're dealing with our own issues. And, and I, and I believe the community recognizes that. So I, I, you know, again, um, we'll have more information in a couple of weeks, but I really think, you know, if what, you know, is being said tonight is true, then I think it's time that the community, you know, speaks up. You know, I'm hoping that the council allows for comment at one of their next meetings. But, um, you know, I, I'm glad that we did this tonight. I think it's worked out fairly well and, uh, you know, we can improve on it next time, but thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Levis, and I agree. I'm, I'm so glad that we have this format that everybody can share. We can see everybody, and I, I really hope that the town council does more of a format like this as opposed to just a conference call. It certainly makes it so that people see us, they can see our reactions, and it makes it a lot easier for the public to be part of the process in the decision-making. So I concur that this was great. I wanna thank Ms. Levis and Mr. Murphy for making this happen and for everyone who has, in fact, joined this, um, this, uh, meeting. And I know it's being recorded as well, so it will be open to the public to be able to go and check it out. And I would encourage, I think I've seen as high as 40 participants, which is usually a, a lot higher than our typical meeting. So, it's gratifying to know that people are interested in, in their home watching us. So, um, with that said, I, I'd entertain a motion to schedule our next meeting.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we schedule our next meeting for what date, Madam Chair?
I believe it's Thursday, um, May 14th.
Thursday, May 14th, Mr. Levis?
Yes.
At 6:00? What time? 6:00 PM?
It says seven.
Seven?
It should be six, I think. If we could do six. I mean, it's up to you. You're the chair. So.
Unless we hear from the public that six is, is not, is too early, then six is fine. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't even hear the second. Sorry.
Kathy, just, just one thing. It says that it's going to be at the town hall. Is that?
No, 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 that, that, that's going to be, that'll be the same as this one virtual. So. It's not going to be at the town hall. So. And I think this is a formality. I mean, I, I don't know. Mr. Anderson might still be on, but I think, you know, I mean, I, I don't think we're written in stone that locked in stone, but I, I, I could be wrong. I'm not a lawyer either. So.
Okay. As long as it's posted correctly, I think it's not really, not really important as far as the actual wording. So.
Wanted to make sure to my own purpose.
Thank you. I, I guess we should officially vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to adjourn? I have eight 16.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn at eight 16 PM.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. Goodbye, everyone. Nice seeing you all.
Thank you.
See you later. Thank you. Thanks.